You want to stand for the pledge, please? Hey, good evening, everyone. I guess we'll get started. First thing we usually talk is public input. Is there anyone that wants to have any public input? Not a big selection here, okay? We'll go to item two, the abstracts. Everybody's had a chance to look at the abstracts. If there's no questions, I need a motion to approve them.
What motion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Department heads? Mr. Smith, you're first.
Evening, everyone.
Good.
Everybody getting my report? With the chain of way we have to do it now? Any questions with anything?
Yeah, it comes different, though, yeah.
Yeah, I still can't email.
We got it, doesn't matter.
We did have a water main break that was found by accident. But the weather was really nice, so it was a good time. A good thing we found it.
That was New Year's Day, right?
No, this is another one.
Oh.
We had another one on Upper Delaware Street.
We've been pretty lucky so far with the
Snow.
No snow or anything, so I won't say too loud because I know it's on the way.
Yeah, it sounds like this week, maybe.
Yeah. Whatever we get, it's
Well, no one's here.
Better, yeah, better than what we had in the past.
Yep, yep, it's been pretty mild so far.
Anyone have anything? You're working on the budget?
Yep, yep, full steam ahead.
We need to get it done really quick so Joey can put the numbers together.
Yeah, it's, right now it's tough. I called today, actually, to try to get a price sheet because like for our meters and stuff like that. And they told me they're going to price change in January, but they have no idea when they're going to get it. So they're going to let me know. And right now, prices are changing nonstop.
Daily, yeah, I know.
It's going to be probably shaky.
It's going to be tough when we're doing a budget that way, too, because everything is going up so much, we're going to have to
It changes daily.
People are going to be upset that everything's going up crazy.
That's all I got.
If nothing else, thank you. Josh, you're next, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You guys got my report? Working on the CRS report for annual recertification. I should have most of that done in another week or two, so it won't be late. Did you guys have any questions with anything with that? Or the report? Okay. At Wood Gray and Dutcher, at the beginning of the week, there's been 22 properties removed from the special flood hazard area.
On Griswold Street, right?
Griswold, East Street, Eastbrook out that way, yep. So it's a pretty big number.
That means they don't, they won't be required to have
Won't be required, but they're still advised that they should.
Yeah.
So.
That's a big deal, but it shows that the projects have been working.
Yep, yep, it is a big deal. So the flood maps are probably going to be updated with that, so. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Yeah, but upgrading those flood maps costs a lot of money, too.
Apparently, it's not going to cost anything, so.
Really? I spoke to Greg the other day, he was telling me to do the flood map from FEMA, update the flood map, costs like $40,000.
Something because of, I can't remember exactly what it is.
Well, it's good, I'm happy about it.
So he's got the info on it and everything, but something about dollars from government, they can't double charge or whatever with it, so. Yeah.
Well, that's right, they probably just got to update that section.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, because I wanted to do the whole thing.
You want to do the whole thing, yeah, so.
Okay, well, that's at least something for now, we'll get started with.
Yep. Anybody got any questions?
Same thing to you, if you got anything for our budget?
I was just speaking with Eric about it, we're going to meet together. I don't really see anything that I need or anything, so, but we'll sit down and talk.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Yep.
Jason's not here, so we'll go to Bill.
Hello. A couple things to bring up to the board tonight. We do have a few ongoing projects at the wastewater treatment plant. Earlier this summer, we had applied for two different grants. One of them came through, unfortunately, it was reduced, but it's better than none coming through. The village has awarded $30,000 to go towards doing an INI info and infiltration study to try to reduce the amount of water that's coming into the system that shouldn't be. This was awarded at the end of December. The village does have to get back to Environmental Facility Corporation, State Agency, managing that by January 7th, if it's something you want to proceed with. There is a $6,000 local match, a 20% local match. Initially, we had applied for $100,000 with the understanding that we may have, we would have to kick in, the village would have to kick in 20 to get that 100. 100 was reduced to 30, so the 20 was reduced to 6 as the minimum local match in order to realize the $30,000 grant from EFC.
See, if I understand, if we want to get to 30, we have to put up 6, we get to use the 36.
36 would be the project cost to go towards getting cameras in the system and writing the report to say this is what was found and this is the recommended repairs. And then that report is used as a basis to try to leverage funding to make the fix, line a pipe, replace a section, patch a manhole, replace this or that, depending on
And the last time we did a study was back when, 2006, correct?
There was work done in 2006 after that flood event, there was work done in 1996 after that flood event. Those flood events are hard on a collection system, and they generally don't get better after they've been
So if we were going to use the study from back in 2006, it would be 20 years old, so it's probably
Yeah, and it's, and the whole system wasn't, I mean, most of what was done in 2006 was to go out and clean out the gravel that had built up in the lower portions of the village. So it wasn't looking at the overall system, it was going out and looking at the areas that were backed up and pipes were broken and cleaning those out and making those repairs, so. The goal of this is to be more comprehensive across the system, looking at some of the stream crossings. Initially, like I said, we were looking to do a $100,000 project. This, you know, narrows the scope down, so instead of being able to look at 10 streets or whatever the number is, we may be only able to look at a portion of that, but it's a step in the right direction to try to
But the board has to decide which way we want to go on that, we got to decide tonight.
We have to decide tonight if it's something you want to proceed with.
If we don't do it and we give back the 30,000,
Right, then it goes to the next
Took us a long time to get that much, at least, so I don't know, whatever.
This was the third, the third time that we applied for funding for INI work, so.
So what's everybody's idea, what do you want to do with this?
So is there a priority section that you would look at in mind right now that, given the reduced funding?
Probably Liberty Street and some of our stream crossings. Those are areas where there's higher groundwater and have been problematic in the past. I know the village has done repairs throughout the last couple of years. Butch has been out, we've replaced, the village has repaired a number of manholes and made some patches and done some rehab work. It's a, you know, for the amount of pipe you have, it's kind of an ongoing maintenance item to continually be addressing your system and putting money into it every year.
Wasn't there more work needed on the bank below Shepherd Street that we didn't have money for? Couldn't we use it for that?
More money on the bank below Shepherd Street.
Different fund, anyway?
It was a different, yeah, it was a different thing, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I thought we needed like more nails or something, something had to be done.
Oh, yeah, we looked at doing a section further up that we ended up pulling back because that funding was through Dazney, the village got Sam Grant to pay for the bank repairs.
Now, if we were to apply for this, would this give us a leg up? Funding from Washington never shows up?
Yeah, that's, I mean, the purpose of this isn't necessarily to do the fix, it's to figure out what the fix is.
Where the worst fix is.
But if we know what it is, we have a chance of actually applying for that.
Right, that's, that's the purpose of this funding, is to come up with a plan for, with the fix, and then you use that plan to leverage funding, whether it's money coming out of Washington or money coming out of Albany.
We got over $1,000,000 in funding that's supposed to be available.
So if we do the match, is that we have funding to match?
6,000, we need $6,000.
Not right now, we don't know.
It would be
Have to be after June if you guys are going to put it in the budget.
Right, later in the year.
Yeah.
So we have time to make that decision in the grand scheme?
No, we got to, if we got to do it, we have to do it now, but we have time to get the money for June, we got to do it.
This starts the process of getting a grant agreement in place, which takes several months, I know. In the case of Dazney, it's taken two years in some cases, and you can't really start the project until you, until you you can't start the project until you have a grant agreement. It takes a month of Sundays to get the grant agreement, but the first step is to say, yes, we want to proceed, or not. I think the initial discussion when we looked at applying for this was to, there is a line item in the budget for collection system repairs, and I think the discussion had been to try to fund it out of that line. But if you use it to go out and put cameras in, then you're not using it to do patches. But this is to find out where you need to put patches in, we have miles and miles of pipe and you know, we don't know what the condition of all of it is until we do the inspections.
We have had, as we did some last year to we checked some and repaired some manholes and some other stuff.
Yes.
How much money was that?
About two years now. Two years, your old manholes we did. I think for like $1,000 a manhole, to seal them up.
But did you, we put that in the budget usually every year, didn't we?
Yeah, we put, try to put some money in there, yeah.
So we could use that money.
Does that include storm drain?
No, it's
Different fund.
Different sort of fund. Right, that's the, that's the collection system line in the budget that's potentially, you could use that for.
We could use the $6,000 if we have to, if we have to use it to what we need.
Right.
Is there enough money like through that, Joe, do you think?
Not now, no.
But in June?
And in June, we'd have to reduce whatever number we come up with for INI repair, we'd probably have to reduce it by the $6,000.
Yeah.
Because we're not going to
But if we don't get the grant, then it's not going to be, we might do the repairs. We've been doing here by year anyway, right?
We've been doing, trying to do a little each year, yes.
Right, so I would think we would have
So you got to make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Okay.
There's a couple that go with that for the process of the grant. The one is to authorize the mayor to sign their respective paperwork. The other one is the $6,000 commitment, which you just did, and then the final is to do an environmental review, which we're not building anything with this, it's to go out with cameras and look at your existing infrastructure. So it would be a type 2 action under SEER. So we have to do those couple as part of the funding as well.
I'd make a motion that the mayor is notorious, represents the New York State Engineering, tiny green.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Use the $6,000.
Yeah, yeah, we did, yeah, I think the one you guys did would count for that. And then the SEER would be the last one.
Just explain the SEER process again, is that
The obligation to spend the $6,000 is done there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, I mean, the first motion you guys passed, I think, was to do the $6,000 match.
Right, and then the SEER?
Yeah, the SEER is the State Environmental Quality Review Act, so any action a municipality takes, in this case, doing an environmental study, any action you take, whether you're doing a study or clearing a whole hillside to build a whatever, you have to do an environmental review, and then there's different levels of review depending on how intensive your project is. A type 1 is the most intensive project, where you could have a big impact on the environment. An unlisted action is something that kind of falls in the gray area between, and then a type 2 action is something that really doesn't have an opportunity to have a negative environmental impact. So being that we're not building anything here now, we don't have, you know, we wouldn't be making a negative environmental impact, we're looking at existing
Who's have that report?
There is no report, when it's a type 2 action, it's just a board declaration that this is a type 2 action.
Ah, okay, so it's no
No, when we've done some of the bigger projects with the water project and whatnot, when we're digging up streets and doing work all over the place, those are type 1 actions sometimes. And then we have like 20-page reports that are filled out to do the environmental review to look at what is, what's the impact on the fish and birds and the
So this just takes a board motion?
Does it take two separate motions?
What's that?
The HF, these separate motions?
Yeah, the type 2 action.
This is the last one. You want to do it, you might as well, I guess.
I'd make a motion to the village board to prepare an infiltration infiltration study for which, I don't know if it would be found in New York State, but it's SDFC, engineering plan grant, be a type 2 action under SEQR8.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carrie.
The other items on here, the plant evaluation is a carryover from the last couple of months. The new item, which has been ongoing for several months, but we were authorized this month by DEP. So at the wastewater plant, the SeBud building, the sand filter building in the back of the facility,
Explain a little about the money, too.
There, that portion of the wastewater plant was paid for to be constructed in 2000 by New York City DEP. The operation and maintenance of it is paid for by New York City DEP because it makes the water cleaner going out to the river.
And that 20,000, that was put in by the DEP, city? It's not our money, it's the city money, correct?
It's 100% New York City money. So there's a project that's been identified over there to replace a series of valves in the building. They're 14-inch plug valves that weigh, I don't know, 1,500 pounds apiece, give or take. Those need to be taken out and then new valves put in their place, and we're going to put hydrostat, pneumatic operated valves in place, so they're easier to operate. And that project cost is probably going to be $100,000, give or take, to do the construction. So plans have to be drawn up so that that work can be bid out. And that has been reviewed by New York City DEP, and they give a written confirmation that the project costs, including the engineering that's discussed here, and then ultimately, the construction costs, when we bid the work out, will be 100% paid by the city, so it's not, there's no, there's no local match because it's part of the sand filter building. Some of the other, the clarifier, some of the other parts and pieces are village costs. This part of the plant, of the facility is not, so. To start that project, we would ask the board entertain approving an engineering amendment to our agreement with the village, our operating, our annual services agreement with the village, to prepare the plans and do the construction administration for the valve replacement in the SeBud building. And the budget for that was 20,000. Out of the total project cost was between 120 and 140.
And that would be the city.
And that's 100% New York City DEP funded.
So we need a motion for that?
It's not going to cost us anything.
No, no, thank you.
So sometimes the money from the city lags, right? So if there's any sort of lag period, you won't be requiring
No.
Emergency infusion of cash?
No, we're
So we need a motion for that?
I would make the motion, we approve the amendment to the 2021, 2022 General Services Agreement, Delaware Engineering, the SeBud valve replacement project amendment to increase the contract value by $20,000. Cost 100% New York City.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie.
The other items there are just kind of updates on other ongoing projects. The water project, which funding the village closed on your financing, on your construction loan with EFC last month, so we're starting on the design for that project. Survey's underway, working with Butch and his crew to do the design for the water project, which will be replacing water mains, well repairs and repairs at the water tanks. So that's underway. And then at the Curry well, the board approved, moving forward, a project to replace, or to replace one of the wells down there that's been in place for, since the 60s, with the federal money, the ARPA money, so that project is underway. The quotes were obtained from the well driller, Lane Christiansen, who has done most of your well work in the village for a number of years. They provided the lowest quote, and the village approved that last month. We met with Lane the week before Christmas, just to walk through the project with them, and Sterling Environmental was helping coordinate that. So they're probably looking at February to be on site, which is cold, but it's also good because the ground will be frozen, so we have to drive across there, it won't be, so because it rains every day. So that's underway, so in February, we'll start drilling, and we'll find out if we find the water we're looking for.
We should be, it's still there.
Before you go on, the water system project, we did have to close on the short-term financing in December with EFC. I did just get a bill today from Walsh &amp; Welsh. It's for $3,500. Can I have board permission to go ahead and pay this before we get to February?
Motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay.
That's built into the financing, the project budget for that, so it's The highway garage, we know, funding was finally in place last fall for that. We're working with Butch to get a
Before the roof caves.
Yes.
Put all building caves, actually.
Save the stove.
Not that part of the building. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but certainly not least, chief?
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, I'm good. Actually, I've got a really short list, believe it or not. I'm looking for approval for Kevin Doig to go to FDL Field Training Offshore School. It starts tomorrow, it's cost $200. It's in Delhi. And that's kind of short notice, it kind of came up there after our last meeting, so I didn't get a chance to do it.
You have the money in the budget, right?
I do, yes, yep, there's no problem with that.
This is the one we approved for him before and it got canceled, or was that a different one?
No, I think it was a different one.
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay.
So then, there's another training, not until March. It's $175 per person, and he's like, he would like to go that, too, and also, I would also like to attend that with him. It's in Broom County. It's March 14th. It's 9 o'clock till 4:00 PM, it's for case law, specifically with the search and seizures and stuff. And I think it'd be a good idea that at least one of us attended, if not both of us. So I would look for approval for that because we have to register that, the local, you know, Delhi, they're kind of flexible with us, but the trainings, your DCGS are a little bit more rigid as far as time.
We should send everyone to that.
About $365?
$175 per person. And that's if they have it, you know, with, you know, the status and COVID and stuff like that, so if it doesn't get canceled, but I would like, he's obviously expressed interest in it.
It's good to have.
The money's in the budget.
Yes, yeah, there's not a problem with the money in the budget.
Need a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay.
That's really it, we had a
Had a busy year.
Yeah, we had a busy month again, right up until the very end of it. Accident DWI over on Mead Street. And we were able to apprehend that person and got some serious charges he's looking at, and yeah, it's been busy.
Yeah, it's kind of very, exceptionally busy, yeah.
Yeah.
We're always pretty busy.
Bigger cases.
Yes, yes.
More time-consuming, for sure.
Everybody else is feeling okay, or?
Yeah, everybody seems to be back in
Back in the saddle again?
Yeah, yeah, it seems like everybody's recovering and coming back, so.
Did the cameras ever get fixed?
The cameras.
Remember they were down, and we were talking about replacing them in the police building? They work?
I didn't know they were down, yeah, no, they're
They're working.
Yeah.
This is a long time.
This was a while ago.
Yeah, no, no, that's, yeah, that, yeah, that's
That was quite a while ago.
Yeah, and they weren't down for an extended amount of time.
Great. Anybody else have anything for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Yeah, why are you shaving?
I'm not having it.
Trustee reports? Just now with you, Eric.
All right, well, this will be meeting with department heads next week, go over the budget figures and get that in order there. Also able to take a tour of 150 Delaware Street tonight with a few potential people that are interested in it. It's really neat what they have going on there.
Yeah.
Just another sign of the interest in the village, so happy with that.
Yeah, they got some nice plans for that place. Of course, I always think about the three businesses down below, but I think upstairs, you got two floors up there with a lot of the businesses, office space, I should say, for the belt. They want to do some good things, I know.
Other than that, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, you got anything you want to?
As you know, Devin has been out and he is representing the police department. Joe and I, and Devin, we could be here together in the next few days. Steve, we're just not getting the budget.
Yeah, we need to get that budget, something going through and get started on it. That it?
That it.
Steven?
Offensive report.
Okay. On the major report, I really don't have a lot to talk about, except that I think most everybody knows we have a new person interested in the bowling alley complex. A Dr. Thomas Doyle. He wants to come in, his lawyer's already contacted Dave Merzak, our lawyer, and looks like things are going pretty good, so they got a contract together. He said he would try to have the bowling alley up for summer leagues this summer, which would make a lot of people very happy, and then his next deal would be the restaurant. He's contacted that guy, John Tapper, from Bar Rescue or something like that, to see if he'll come down and give him a hand, so if that happens, that would give us a little bit more publicity, that would be good, too. And so that's going good. I think I had also mentioned that where CNC Feed used to be on Howell Street, that's being worked on, it's been gutted out. It's going to be a Taekwondo studio, probably opening up the end of May, beginning of June. So that's good. Everybody knows about the Empire Metal Works Building, Jimmy Frainer. His father's coming back into Walton with a company that builds buses, that he was down in Orange County, that's going to be around 120 jobs coming into Walton, so that's also a pretty good thing. So I think overall, we're, I think we're starting to move in a pretty good direction, finally, it's taken us a long time, but we're getting there. And I want to thank everybody's help for getting it done. And that's all I have to say now. We'll go, next section would be number 6, 2022 Set Polling Place and Hours.
The board needs to make a motion to set where we're going to have the election in the time. I'm recommending we have it here, like we have for the last few years, and from noon to 9:00 PM.
Motion that we do that.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Can we have, those who didn't know, we have two positions opening
Which positions?
For trustees.
And which trustees?
Steve Seehan. My deputy neighbor, Mr. Doig, big Doig. Okay. Number 7, the Delaware County Planning Annual Advisory Service.
The planning board agreement was set, and again, it's $3,500 to work with Delaware. They help us with our planning board meetings and zoning and grants and things like that, so it hasn't changed for a number of years, so we're just needs to approve that.
Motion be approved.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor? Close? Carry. That's it, right? No one has anything else? That's it. Thank you, everybody's coming. Feels kind of funny being done so fast, but I'm, I'll take it. It's going to be a record. I don't have a lot of CFF.
Are you adjourned?
Yeah, we're adjourned, I'm sorry, yes. Thanks.